Meeting of the Planning Board of April twenty four, two thousand twenty four to order. Alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Kevin Hein here.
Geiger Hobson here.
Also joining us, our town planner Cassandra Thayer and our town council Carol Murray. We seem to have a number of attendees. We have three, four items on the agenda tonight to deal with. Cassandra, can you just let the public know how they can participate?
Yes, so we will go in order of agenda items. If you would like to speak, you can raise your virtual hand. And we will pull you forward when the chair calls for public comment. There's also the Q and A, which you may use if you would just like to type a question and we can respond verbally to it.
Okay. Thank you. So the first item is the continued public hearing for a large home review seventy Black Horse Lane. Let me just promote whoever is here for that.
Yes. I will.
Since I missed the first hearing, I won't be voting on this one.
All right, I want to begin by saying that, you know, Mr. Callahan, you submitted materials as late as this afternoon. And we have a very strong standing request that we get materials at least a week ahead of time. And it doesn't give the board the opportunity to review the new materials. We all have jobs during the day. So I'm going to ask you to continue this hearing for another time. I'm not going to start letting the rule be flouted, start precedent of people not following the rules that we've set that's been in place for a long time. Do you agree to a continuance?
I really, we're really not presenting anything new. We're here to bring back feedback from two comments from our last hearing. I didn't, I'm sorry if something wasn't submitted on time.
We have very clear, clearly stated rules about that. So Cassandra, I know this, as of this morning, we didn't have any height calculations. Do we have those?
And we did receive the height points this afternoon.
No, I haven't seen them. And I don't know about other members of the board.
If the, I mean, if the board is okay, I have my architect on here. He was prepared to walk you through the formula. That I thought that was the idea. He was going to show how we calculated per the.
The idea also show the board.
And the only other thing was.
The idea is to show the board respect by submitting things in advance as we request. I'll leave it to the rest of the board or how they would like to proceed.
I haven't had a chance to look at anything, so I, I'm leaning with Tom on holding to our ground. I apologize for that, but some of us have lots of other things going on during the day.
I think that Mr. Callahan is appropriately addressing the current situation. We are clear from the very beginning in our meetings that we require a week's time to be able to review anything, even if it is a minor adjustment. And the reason is because we all have to make a decision that's in your best interest. And without that information, we're not as successful. But it's basically the way all the boards work. So we're just carrying out the same practice.
Carolyn, forgive, forgive me if I'm incorrect, but we have to have agreement on the continuance, correct?
Yes, you do.
Callahan, I'm asking you once again to agree to continue this to May first.
This has been a long process. I would like to ask the board's consideration here. We've been at this for a year. And.
And submitting materials in a timely manner shouldn't be a problem. I'm just, I'm sorry, but it's just not.
No, it's not fair to other people who have been through the same process. You know, we have to hold to the rules and the protocol that we have been following.
Would it be easier, for example, that one of the items, the light fare, we'll just delete the light part, the driveway lighting at all? So there's nothing to talk about.
That is an adjustment to your plan. So if you make the adjustment to your plan, you do have to do that. And it's something which has to come before us prior to the meeting.
I'm not sure what your point is in doing that. And, you know, we're going to get a homeowner then after the fact. Who's going to want lighting in the driveway? We're not going to have a way to regulate that, so. You know, we're not, I don't think we should be in a position of entertaining things for your expediency. I'm sorry, but. I guess we're sitting here, will you agree to a continuance for one week or not?
Are you, is this something you have to vote on?
There, if you agree to it, we'll make, we'll make a motion to continue it.
What's the option here?
Meet next week on May first.
Hey.
And I won't be here, so.
Does that mean it gets continued again?
No. No, doesn't have to be. I assume we'll have a quorum next week, just because I'm not going to be here, doesn't mean we won't have a quorum.
Very good. I don't think I have much of a choice.
Entertain a motion to continue, please.
Second.
Oh, all right. I was asking somebody else to make the motion. I'll make the motion that this matter be continued to May one, two thousand twenty four, six thirty. And if there's any other submissions of information, it needs to be in.
Get them to us.
All right, second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, alphabetical roll call?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Hein, aye.
Geiger Hobson, aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you next week. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is what, the King Street?
Yes, it is.
The folks here for the A and R. As I, I see a glaring problem with that that just jumps right out at you, whether we can even entertain it.
It also did not turn in documentation prior to the day it was required.
For the A and R?
Or the document itself is stated.
That's not the issue with the A and R. The A and R does appear on the plans to have access. Seems to be a threshold question, so I was wondering if we could get it out of the way, but if they're not here, we'll deal, we'll deal with the next item, which is site plan review for one forty nine King Street. So we'll call that. You can advance everybody into Sandra when you're ready. Can you mind reading the public hearing notice?
Yes, I've brought forward attorney Adam Brodsky. Adam, is there anybody else that I should be pulling forward before I start reading the public hearing notice?
Yes, I'm also here on the A and R, so I'm prepared to address that issue if you'd like, Chair Callahan.
Yeah, I looked at the plan just a few minutes ago for a second time. I don't see where there's adequate access. It looks like the lots border on a, quote unquote, right away slash common driveway, and that's, as you well know, not adequate.
Chair Callahan, if you read the notes in the plan, that twenty foot right away was created by a subdivision plan in nineteen sixty, which was approved by the planning board. And so it provides legal frontage as well as practical access to the divided lots. And I should say that Jason Scott from Morse Engineering is the project engineer. He should be in the audience.
Or King Street or?
No, we'll come, we'll come to that.
The A and R, I'm sorry, Mr. There.
We're going to, we'll come back to that then. If you're ready to go with the King Street property, let's go for it.
Okay, I will begin reading the public notice then.
Thank you.
Pursuant to MGL chapter forty dash A and section three hundred dash twelve point seven of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform, webinar ID eight five six two eight nine zero five four eight three, passcode six zero four four nine three, on Wednesday, April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four, at six thirty P M for a site plan review application for property being shown on Cohasset assessor maps, C six dash seven two dash zero zero five, one forty nine King Street, Cohasset, Mass, zero two zero two five. The application is requesting to build a seventy two thousand three hundred and twenty eight square foot self-storage facility. The application is submitted by PSI Atlantic Acquisitions, Eight LLC, five thirty Oak Court Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one seven. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight A M to four thirty P M, and Friday, eight A M to twelve P M. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting Cohasset MA dot org slash active PB applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated.
Thank you, Cassandra. All right, Mr. Brodsky, Attorney Brodsky, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Chair Callahan. My team is assembling. So I believe that Jesse Morgan, who is a senior vice president with Premier Storage Investors, on behalf of the applicant, should be attending. Dan Ketches, our registered professional engineer with BHB, Matthew Keely, our traffic engineer with BHB, as well as Jan Bryan, our architect with Michael Parker Studios. And forgive me. Things move very quickly this evening, so we're all catching up. As Ms. Thayer read in the public notice, we're proposing to construct an approximately seventy two thousand square foot self-storage facility with four levels, eight parking spaces, a driveway and retaining wall. The storage use is an allowed use as a right within the technology business district. And as such, we do not require zoning approval, excuse me. We do, however, require a stormwater permit. And we have filed our application for a stormwater permit with the Conservation Commission, which last conducted a public hearing on April eighteenth and which was continued to May second. As you likely know, both the planning board and the Conservation Commission have agreed to have Pat Brennan peer review the project. Mr. Brennan has provided his comments. And in fact, at least presented the stormwater comments to the Conservation Commission at the last hearing. VHB has been consulting with Mr. Brennan and is working to address all of his outstanding comments, which principally focused on stormwater. And we anticipate that there will be changes to the plan to address those stormwater comments. And we will obviously address the other handful of zoning comments raised by Mr. Brennan. We have prepared a short PowerPoint presentation, which we presented, given to Ms. Thayer. I don't know whether she wants to display that or whether she wants to give a member of our team the ability to share that. And I'd like to introduce Jesse Morgan, who's joined us, who's going to introduce PSI Premier Storage Investors. And then have Dan Ketches, our professional engineer, begin the professional presentation. So we just need some direction as to how you want us to utilize the PowerPoint, please.
You, you, you guys run it, if you don't mind. So you, you present the power, your PowerPoint.
Great. Jesse, do you want to control the PowerPoint?
Let me see if I can share my screen once. Can y'all all see that?
Yep, yes.
Perfect. Well, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Jesse Morgan, Senior Vice President, Premier Storage Investors, offices at five three zero Oak Court Drive, Memphis, Tennessee. I'll keep this one very brief. We're national developers of self-storage facilities. It's really all we do. A one-trick pony in that regard have done roughly fifty projects across fourteen states over the past years, including five in Massachusetts, a couple of which are under construction. And, you know, what we do is we try to find communities that have a need for our use and for our product and then, you know, secure their appropriate land sites and the appropriate fit and develop the best self-storage facility we can. We put a lot of time and effort into this one and, you know, happy to answer any questions y'all will have, but like I said, I'll keep it short and turn it over to Dan Ketches, who's, who's our civil engineer here. Dan?
All right. Good evening, Dan Ketches, Civil Engineer with VHB. Just going to briefly run through the site, some of the stormwater as it was submitted. And I'll turn it over to Matt. The existing site, one forty nine King Street, it's about one point eight acres, had a historic auto body repair use on the site. And it's currently occupied by a cell tower and associated infrastructure in the rear of the site. As you can see, the site is, is, because it's disturbed throughout, some access roads to the cell tower existing today. As Adam mentioned, the site is in the technology business district as well as the water resource overlay district. And there are pretty substantial topography changes across the site from the low point on King Street to the high point back by the cell towers, over forty feet of, of great change. The proposed site, as it was submitted, is a seventy two thousand square foot, four-level self-storage facility. There'll be a new curb cut, as shown on the, the south portion of the property to King Street. King Street Route three A is a mast dot right of way, so that curb cut will require a mast dot access permit subsequent to the local permitting process. The site consists of the building, eight new parking spaces, five external and three covered with, under the canopy of the building. In that recessed entrance, there'll be significant landscaping improvements along the site, mostly clustered along the street and towards the entry. In terms of utilities, the site will have underground water and gas services fed from utilities in King Street. There'll be an onsite septic system towards the northeast of the site, because there's no sanitary sewer system available. And the stormwater management system has been designed to meet Mast D P and the town's stormwater bylaw and standards. As it was submitted, that stormwater system consists of a sub-surface detention system and a surface fire retention basin. As Adam mentioned, we, we do anticipate some changes based on the comments we received from Mr. Brennan. And we've been working through making those revisions for a future re-submission. But the, the system, the, as it was submitted, again, contains those, those key components. It provides the half-inch water quality volume. It provides peak rate reduction. There's a long-term O and M plan for maintenance and operation of the system. And there'll be erosion and sedimentation controls associated with the project. The project will disturb greater than one acre, so it will require coverage under the NFTs, Construction General Permit. And I was able to connect with Mr. Brennan yesterday and walk through our intended revisions, and he didn't express any concerns with the approach. So I think we have a, a solution and a good path forward to resolve the comments we received in his peer review letter, as well as some miscellaneous comments from the Conservation Commission. That, I will pass it to Matt Keely to discuss the transportation.
Thanks, Dan. Again, my name is Matt Keely, Traffic Engineer with VHB. So we submitted a traffic memorandum on March fourteenth that focused primarily on trip generation and parking demand. Typically, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual for our projections. We've found generally that for this particular land use, that ITE tends to be a little bit conservative. Over the past few years, working with the, with the applicant, we've done several projects and collected some empirical data just to compare to the ITE, which is what you see in table two. As shown in table one, based on the ITE projections, we're only expecting about seven peak hour trips in the morning and eleven peak hour trips in the evening, as shown in table two. Those trip generates, generation rates from ITE are substantially higher than, than we've seen at other sites that we've counted. Though we've also provided some parking projections in the memo. Again, we, we compiled some empirical data at other sites. At those sites, we've typically seen an average of three parked vehicles in the weekday morning and six parked vehicles in the weekday evening, and we are providing eight on the, on the current site plan. So we're not anticipating any impacts from the traffic and, and we, we are showing that we should have adequate parking for, for the project. And with that, I think I'm handing it.
Raise your curb cut in relation to the Avalon entrance. Just the residential complex behind you.
I think Dan would have to pull the site plan back up for that.
Yeah, it's on that end of our frontage and can get you a distance.
And you want to have your curb cut right next to the Avalon curb cut?
Yep, and that's going to require a mast dot access permit, so they'll, they'll do a full review of the curb cut.
Yeah, it's roughly a hundred feet.
Is that all for your presentation or is it ready to take?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brewer, I'll start with you.
Seems like they should show us what the building looks like.
Yeah, that was it for traffic, but there's still, there's still other slides left.
Yes, I'm sorry, that Jan Bryan is available, so I thought you were asking also with respect to traffic.
I'll go ahead and speak. My name is Jan Bryan. I'm a principal with Michael Parker Studios, one three seven five five Thompson Place Drive in Charlotte, North Carolina. The image you've got there is a rendering recreated to show materials we're proposing. You can see we've got some brick wainscote across the front of the building, a couple of different colors there, just trying to break up the mass of that masonry base. The remainder of the building is metal panels. At the main entrance, right as you pull into the building, we have some smooth metal panels right there at the entrance. And then the remainder of the building is going to be a pencil rib metal. We've got vertical in the white that you see there. And then the top of the building is a similar pencil rib metal panel in a horizontal position. You can see we've got the downspouts and scuppers across the front of the building. We're running the water toward the front, obviously to come to that basin. And the remainder of the building in the back looks very similar to this. You'll notice we have some active windows across the, the front of the building that you'll be able to see in. The doors that you see there are not active doors, so it's not like that's going to be opened up and being a visible to people stuff, but those are doors just so that from a visibility standpoint, you can tell that this is a storage facility. The loading zone is an open air loading zone, and so vehicles will be able to pull up under the building to get out of inclement weather, weather if necessary, to offload and unload. Small canopy covering the front entrance. Past that, that's about it. The building is about seventy two thousand square feet. Just for the particulars, it's a type two B protected building. We are sprinkled. And it has a TPO roof that you obviously can't see in this picture, but I'll be open for any questions, certainly. If you've got any specific questions about the materials. Thank you.
Could you speak to the lighting? Would now be an appropriate time?
I'm sorry, you said to the lighting?
Yes.
I'll be glad to address that. We've got a couple of poles, mounted lights in the front parking lot. And we are going to have just a couple building-mounted lights. We have done a site photometric and determined that just with those couple of pole-mounted lights and the fixtures on the building that were meeting the requirements for lighting of that parking lot. But obviously trying to minimize the amount of light. All of those are fully shielded fixtures. And obviously none of that crosses any of the property lines.
So the lighting is towards the building or the lighting is on the building and down? Can you just be more specific?
We've got, I, I don't know.
The photometric as well.
Yeah. We've got a building-mounted, we have building-mounted lights that are downlights, so they're fully shielded. Looks like Matt's going to get us that photometric. And then we have two parking lot pole lights. There we go. Thank you.
As Jan mentioned, the pole light, there's one at the entrance, and then one provided above the parking, the parking stalls, the open-air parking stalls. And then there will be building-mounted lights around the perimeter of the building, as well as lighting underneath the loading area. And as y'all can see, I don't know if it's clear here, the, there is no light spillage going beyond the boundary of the property line.
Is there anything else for your presentation?
No, that's it. So I'd answer any questions y'all may have and address any, anything you'd like to know.
I just, I would just make the general comment to the board that won't be relevant to you with the, the design of this building and the other storage building. screams out for why we need to extend the Harbor Village Design Regulation for three A. That's an inside baseball comment for us. But I'm quickly looking through the bylaw and I'm trying to find, number one, where storage, an indoor storage facility is used as a right, number one. And then with the parking, you seem to have referred to some national standard for parking for this. Have you looked at our bylaw and where in the bylaw are you showing compliance with our parking requirements?
So Chair Callahan, we consulted with the building commissioner who confirmed that the use is permitted as a right within the technology business district. I can pull up the bylaw, cite you to the appropriate section if you need that.
Well, I've been quickly looking through it and I don't see it specifically stated, so. You know, it would, it would have to be, in my view, you know, in reading something into a, a use that's already listed. Let me ask you another thing. We have another storage facility just down the road, and you say there's a need. Did you do any kind of market analysis and whether we really do need one of these in our small town? I mean, I assume we're going to be servicing neighboring towns, customers as well.
So Chair Callahan, again, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but not really an appropriate question for site plan review by the planning board. It's a business issue for the applicant.
All right, I'll go back to Mr. Brewer. Do you want to start with any other questions or comments?
Yeah, sure. I haven't seen Brennan's comments yet, the peer reviewers. So my understanding is that this is. So my understanding is that this is just a mile high introduction and that we'll follow up with a subsequent hearing. First question I'd have is how tall is the is the building? Average grade to your parapet?
I think, Dan, do you have that number available? Because we did consultation based off where the grade exists today.
Yeah, so we had calculated based on the existing grade of one oh roughly one oh five. And that gets you a zoning building height of thirty-eight point four feet. One of the comments from Mr. Brennan was he calculated the. Proposed finish grade, which is a slightly lower elevation. In either case, no matter how you calculate it, it's compliant. Below the forty-five foot maximum.
Well, I I believe we changed our our height maximum to thirty-five feet in all districts. Tom, you you were the spearhead on this. A while ago, do you recall?
We changed the definition. Changed the definition and 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 how you calculated and you've told us that this is a site that varies widely.
So the forty-five foot in the Technology Business District is the correct height?
That's, that's correct. And again, we we had a pre-application meeting with the Building Commissioner. In order to confirm the methodology that we use and it conforms to. Your current requirements for the calculation of building height. I know that there was, and and for your information, Mr. Brennan's report is dated April four. Twenty twenty-four, so I assume it's been available to the. Plan Board. I know it's on the on the website with all of the information. He did ask us to look at another way to calculate it. Using, I think, finished grade. Regardless of which methodology you use, we meet the requirements within the zoning district.
It's still below the forty-five feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the the, obviously, the drive aisle is in the highest part of the site, which is logical in that that would. That would reduce or or allow mitigation of the of the. Existing street grade to the useful parts of your building on the on that northern side of your of your property. But just, can you, I mean, Brendan might have covered this, but what what are your grades in the driveway? As they approach Route three A?
So there's a flat, easy level landing portion at. The Route three A curve line, so a car will be able to come down and stop at a. An area of a slope around two percent. And then it it slopes up and I believe seven and a half up to the proposed parking area.
So the the maximum slope is seven and a half percent slope?
Correct. The the access drive around the rear to the cell tower goes up to ten percent, but that's for maintenance and emergency access only.
Right, not customers or the public?
Correct.
I don't recall if we have a maximum driveway. Slope in our bylaws. But that's something that we can ask Mr. Brennan to follow up on, I guess. And since. Since there's a a sidewalk that terminates very close to your northern edge along Route three A. I think it would be great to have that sidewalk continue, I'm sorry, on the southern end. With the Avalon entrance. It would be great for you guys to continue that sidewalk construction across the front of your property. So that. If it gets stitched together with other sidewalk elements, could make a path that goes to the train station.
Certainly something we can take a look at. As I mentioned, that the right of way is mast dot jurisdiction, so I think that would be subject to their review and approval.
Of course, they they probably would have some standards as well that they'd want you to comply with. Not that I expect people would be walking up to your facility with. Boxes of things they want to put in storage. But it is an important corridor with mixed use residential. Aspect and a and a train station that's close by.
That's something we can certainly explore.
Those are, those are my preliminary comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. I just, again, I had a question before, how you've calculated parking spaces pursuant to our bylaw. That's number one. And Cassandra, I would like to get a memo from John Howland. As to where he's determined that this is a use as a right.
So just to note on that, Tom, I was just looking at the newly adopted Article four, where we kind of broke things down. More specifically, enclosed storage business is. Listed as a right in the Technology Business District under the section of light industry uses.
Unfortunately, I don't have the new one in front, so. All right, let's answer that question, but let me go back to the parking calculation.
Yes, I don't believe that self-storage facilities specifically is called out in the zoning bylaw for a. Required parking ratio, the way, you know, an office use or manufacturing use might be, so the. The requirement, like Matt said, was based on industry standards and. Counts conducted on similar facilities.
Then we actually counted, we actually counted the. The facility down at eighty-one King Street. And I'm trying to pull up those numbers. I believe there was one car parked in the AM and and three cars parked in the PM. So we have more than the demand that we observed at eighty-one King Street.
Speaking operationally. I know that wasn't your specific question, but speaking operationally, this is plenty of parking spaces for what we do. What we really care about is that, you know, getting some of these covered so that our customers can access the property and then providing appropriate turnaround areas, but. You know, building these all across the country, doing fifty projects, eight. Has been plenty, especially for a facility of this size, where we're looking at something that's probably twenty-five, thirty percent smaller than what we typically do. Eight parking spaces, operationally at least, is something we're very comfortable with.
Under, under our parking regulations, seven point one. I characterize this as.
We can't hear you, Tom.
Um, we can't hear you.
Seven point one H warehouses, blah, 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 and other storage, manufacturing and industrial buildings, one space for each five hundred square feet, or a floor area. I'd like to know why that doesn't apply. Throw that out there.
Chair Callan, I, as you know, there was another.
I'm not interested in the industry standards in Tennessee. I'm interested in what required under our bylaw.
Chair Callan, what I'll do is I'm gonna, I I don't have it with me this evening, but I have the approval for the other self-storage. Which is, I think, our reference point, so I, we will provide the answer to your question at the next meeting.
All right, I don't expect an answer right now, so. All right, Ms. Glassmeyer.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to presume that we'll hear more information about. The issues that were raised at the Concom meeting regarding the. Amount of water that is likely to come off that property, so I'm going to. Set that aside. This is a perfect building to be using various types of. Low carbon, energy generating technology. And I am wondering whether or not you are. Given that you're doing this across the country, it would seem to me that you both have economies of scale. But you also have the potential to have economies of scope. That would really make it attractive for the the town and, you know, in the future. To consider putting some type of energy efficiency. Operation within the context of the project. Is there any discussion of that?
Yeah, I think certainly that's something that's on the forefront of our mind, as it should be really for every developer. You know, one of the things we're exploring, and it's typically what we do at the construction drawing stage, is potentially a rooftop solar panel system. Especially in Massachusetts. Now that will be a case by case basis, but that's. One of the options that is available for self-storage facilities and then. As a means of best practice, we do everything we can practically to have energy efficiency. So all of the lighting, other than, you know, emergency and night lighting within the property is LED lighting. That's on occupancy sensors, you know, when we. Climatize these properties, they'll be fully conditioned, but it's climate controlled. We maintain a. A range of temperature. We don't force a single temperature at all, all times of the year. The HVAC systems are high efficiency, glazing is energy efficient architectural glass, the. Toilets are all low flow. We do a lot, you know, specifically in terms of best building practices to capture that. Certainly, we could outline those more thoroughly, but I believe that was the direction of your question.
Thank you. A little bit further. To how far up does your property go relative to the cell tower? Do you own the entire? Area between the building where you're proposing to place and the cell tower?
That is correct, yes.
So. That's not an insubstantial amount of land where you could actually also put up. Solar panels. Is there, have you ever done any sort of on-ground solar installation?
We have not, no. I don't know if that would be something that, given the slope and the access right that the cell tower had, that would be a fit here. And just to clarify, I don't own the property. We're contract indie. So I'd said, yes, we own it, but we don't. We're contract indie. But I don't know if that necessarily be a fit here, but certainly, you know, we're trying to use the site as much as we can.
I mean, the state of Massachusetts has very attractive. Programs for energy generation and the town is always looking for opportunities to expand our capability. So it just might be something to, you know, do a back-of-the-envelope calculation and see whether or not it makes any kind of sense.
Understood, we'll explore.
All right, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Heim.
Yeah, can you explain what contract ND means?
Oh, we are under contract to purchase the property. We do not own the property at this time.
And subject, Mr. Heim, subject to receiving approvals.
Sure, okay. ND, it sounded like that might be an abbreviation for something. Did you say N like Nancy D?
Oh, no, Vindy, like vendor, Vindy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, it might be my accent.
Fair enough. A couple of questions. Is there any? Affiliation or partnership or same company between this? Entity in eighty-one King Street, the other storage facility?
Eighty-one King Street is owned by Extra Space Storage. Extra Space Storage would be a third-party manager for us. That's at least what we're proposing. So they don't have ownership in this property. It's similar to a hotel where, you know, they'll flag, they'll own some properties themselves, other, they'll flag for other owners.
Was the design of that building done by you or your team?
Our team, our team, the was, the green color is extra space's brand color, so there is branding that we do. Align with, but it was our design, correct?
Okay, so this circles me back to the lighting. Questions with regard to downward-facing lights, no trespass beyond the property lines. Lighting for its intended purpose. You mentioned illuminating parking spaces and areas of. Entrance to the property. The other property is abysmal with lighting. There's more trespass on that lighting for that property than there is anywhere else in town. Barring playing fields that may be illuminated after hours. That's a, that's a clear observation, and I would encourage your design team to take a look at what's maybe not working there. And see, make sure you don't duplicate the. Errors of the ways, or so to speak, here. And if there's a way to rectify that after the fact, you know, I'll just put it out there that. It it's abysmal. It goes beyond the property line. It actually in- intrudes on sightlines and cars on three A. It extends across three A, the trespass from the other property. So I mentioned that what's in front of us here is your property, but because there's a connectivity between the design team from that to this. It gives me a lot of reservations with regard to how, whether this is being done with any real thought. As to what the intended purposes are. Not just here, but throughout the town to minimize light trespass, to continue with dark skies to the extent that we can. And to not turn this part of town, just because it is in a business district, into an illuminated. Zone that just really does damage to the dark skies that we do have and that we have. A special access to by being a coastal community. So I would ask you and your team to just keep that in mind. And take a moment to take a look at what's going on at that neighboring property, that it does sound like there's some affiliation and connectivity with, to see what's not going right there. With regard to the lighting issues. Another point I I just wanted to ask is, is this going to be a twenty-four-hour access facility?
No, it will not be so. First, I certainly appreciate the concern about the lighting. They aren't involved in our photometric or lighting plan, but I hear what you're saying and will look into it and make sure that we're not making the same errors as. The previous project. But then to your other question, it's a. Not twenty-four, seven-hour access, it's the six A into ten P M, which is the industry standard, that's for customer access.
Okay, and will the, will the units, you've mentioned they wouldn't be climate controlled, so that means there wouldn't be any.
They will be.
Are there, well, there would be climate controlled for the temperature of. Human occupation, but would there be like cold storage? Is that going to be an option within this building?
No, no, it's really. It's climate controlled, it's kept between roughly fifty-five to eighty degrees, so that leads to. Obviously, energy savings because you're not maintaining a constant, call it seventy-two degree like you may on an office building or retail building. And that's why I mentioned it, but there would not be cold storage. This is just for household goods and, you know, customer use.
Okay, so where, and thank you, where would the air handling units be for that? Would be, would they be in the rear of the building, the side, the roof for temperature control?
We'll have rooftop HVAC units that should be screened by the parapet.
Okay, so just another concern with that, if it's roof-mounted and we're talking about a roof that's going to be forty plus. Feet. That brings it up to a height that is going to be even more susceptible to. Noise issues that might trespass beyond the property. And this isn't, one of your neighbors right here is Avalon, and as we refer to it as Avalon, it's a. Area of residential and, you know, at certain times of the year. Here, you know, we have the windows open and. You know, to have to hear sounds that might readily transfer across. Perhaps an HVAC unit that isn't. Muffled or doesn't have the right screening that would provide some protection against trespass from sound, because these units were mounted on the top of the roof. And at a level that might be bring them closer to the. Area of the residential homes, that just gives me some concern with regard to the thought and placement of those. And that might be something perhaps you could look into so that. Again, you know, things get quiet and dark around here and it's nice to have the windows open or be on your back patio, but to have to hear the hum of a neighbor's HVAC system. Or cycling on and off of the like could be a problem, and I'd like to hear your design team's thoughts to mitigate that entirely.
Understood.
If you will, let me, let me clarify what Jesse mentioned. They're split-type systems, so they're they're very similar to what you'd see in a residence. So the main part of the unit itself actually resides on each individual floor. And then what's on the roof are only condensers. So for instance, it's going to be very similar to what you would see at the back of a residential home. Just that condenser on the roof. Just that condenser on the roof. But the main units themselves are mounted at floor level above the units on each floor. So I just want to make sure you understood that it's not going to be like a big rooftop unit like you'd see, for instance, at a Walmart or something like that. It's much more like a, the size of a residential system. These, we use three ton to five ton units. And they're redundant units. So for instance, each floor might have five of those units. But the condensers themselves, which are much smaller pieces of equipment, that's what would be mounted on the roof. I just want to make sure we're understanding it's not a large package type unit.
Condensers versus the units that are floor mounted, which ones make the most noise? Condensers typically have a fan element. And the fan doesn't, depends on the RPM and the type of fan, you know, sometimes there are noises associated with those. Sometimes there are less. Which, which, what creates a possible noise issue? Either the condenser or those units that you described at the individual floor.
The condensers are just going to have that top mounted blade fan like you'd see at your home. And so they're very quiet units. These are high efficiency units. And obviously that's, that's another reason we tend to use these type of units because they tend to be very efficient. And they're not any more loud or obnoxious than what you might have at the back of your own home.
Okay. Okay. All right. That's all I have for questions. I appreciate the additional information and the, and the future considerations for what we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hein, Ms. Hobson.
I would just like to echo Mr. Hein's comments about the lighting. That is a huge concern. And I'd like to see some more discussion about that and some more plans. Having just come back from Florida, I feel like I, nothing but lights everywhere. So I'd like not to see three A turn into what is right down the street. And I do agree that existing storage facility is tremendously illuminated and infringing on, even though there's no residents around that area where your unit is proposed. There are people living in a residential area. So I'd like to see some more of that. And maybe I missed this, but I'm just curious about the requirement of the Board of Public Health and their submission of your disposal system for waste, et cetera. If I missed that and your septic tank plants, has that been sent to the Board of Health?
That has not been submitted yet. We're anticipating submitting that subsequent to support the conservation and planning board.
Okay. So I would, I would think obviously no decision could be made by us till we know those things have been taken care of. Thank you. That was it.
Anybody else from the board? All right. Do we, Cassandra, do we have any members of the public up there?
Doesn't look like anybody is raising their hand and no one has utilized the Q and A.
Carolyn, anything jumps out at you that we need to consider?
No, at this time, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So looks like we have to continue this. I assume we have availability next week. Cassandra on our schedule?
Yes, you do have availability. The only other application that you have is the large term review that you just continued. I don't know. I mean, I would leave that up to the applicants to decide if that is enough time for them to turn around sufficient information if they wanted to submit anything else.
Chair Callahan, we obviously need to finish our consultation with Mr. Brennan. Revise the plans, get those plans to you sufficiently prior. So I don't think a meeting next week
Okay.
be helpful. Having said that, we have every interesting game that's done as quickly as possible. So I don't know when your, your next meetings are now, perhaps we can just review this.
I think it's the fifteenth, the fifteenth is the next one after that.
That is correct.
And after that is what?
I'm sure that I believe is June 5th, but let me just confirm.
Yeah. Monday is town meeting, so.
Yes, June 5th would be the next date after May 15th.
All right. Those be your choices.
I'll be guided, guided by our technical team. No other, Mr. Ketch is or whether Mr. Morgan wants to speak about dates.
Think the 15th is feasible, Dan, if you believe you can get those adjustments in.
Yep.
So just to clarify for the applicant team, I would need any submissions by noon on May 8th.
Yep, understood.
And I'm sorry, that would include everything to the, to some clarification from the conservation or admissions to the permit on that and to everything to the Department of Public Health.
So Ms. Hobson, I, I, we're going to need a Title V installation permit. I don't think that that's our requirement for you folks to issue site plan approval. It's another permit that obviously we're going to get. We designed the system and we just need to submit to the Board of Health. And with respect to the Conservation Commission, we're meeting with them on May 2nd. So again, it's all, it's all tied and it's all going to be tied to Mr. Brennan's availability, Mr. Ketch's availability. How quickly we can get those stormwater changes done. So I don't know if that's going to be a firm date, but we're trying to run these simultaneously, but we understand that you're going to want to know with respect to stormwater that we have satisfied Mr. Brennan's concerns.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I'm hearing that they're not going to be submitting to the Board of Public Health until after they're done with the two of us. So we can certainly condition. You know, that, that has to be done and, you know, our, our permit will be conditional on getting
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Then I'll make the motion that we continue this matter to February, May 15, 2024 at 6:30.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of medical, please.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmar, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Yodra Hobson, I.
Mr. Brodsky and team, thank you, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Sheriff Callahan. Thank you, everyone. And may I stay on for that A and R, please?
Thank you.
Yes, I will not remove you.
Thank you.
And if it happens, it wasn't intentional. All right. So do we, let me, I don't see it on the agenda. So do we have to read a notice for this one or not? No.
There are no notices for A and R. So no.
So the next item is, what's the address again, since it's not on the agenda? Well, it's not on the one that I have. So I'm sorry. So.
It is on the agenda. It's 257 Atlantic.
257 Atlantic. This is an A and R application. So Attorney Brodsky, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Is, is Jason in the audience? And Mr. Eric, could you promote him?
Yes, I will promote Jason. Is there anybody else that you need me to promote?
Oh, no, thank you. In fact, I I viewed this as a ministerial function with the intention that Jason was simply going to present, but I'll, I'll do my best. This is simply a division of an existing lot. We are not creating a subdivision. We have frontage on the right of way, which as I noted, was actually approved subdivision plan endorsed by the planning board in 1960. And there's a note on the plan that establishes that. And we have access over that. The purpose of this is simply for estate planning. It's just to is just to divide the property so that we have different structures on, on each side. Each of the lots is conformant. And it meets all the requirements under 81P for an approval, not required plan. So, you know, we view this as a ministerial function, asking the planning board for an endorsement.
Carolyn, are we bound by that 1960 decision to, I mean, our bylaw clearly prohibits common driveways from being frontage. I would consider that right of way being inadequate if in other circumstances. I don't know if you need to think about that or give us an opinion about that, but.
Well, I can, I can do a little of both. I mean, I, it would be helpful if we actually saw the 1960 subdivision plan so that we could sort of, you know, compare and contrast or see how it relates to these lots here. But remember, under an A and R, you're only looking at frontage. And at least in terms of linear frontage from my review of the plan, it appears to both lots appear to have the 50 feet of frontage, but that frontage then has to be along one of three types of ways. And one of those ways is a way shown on a plan previously approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law. So I am certainly not calling it to question Attorney Brodsky's credibility. But, you know, it would be nice to have at least seen the 1960 plan to see again that yes, indeed it was endorsed and, and here's the right of way and maybe even verify, you know, the width of it. But taking that note at its face value, it would appear that these lots do have frontage on one of the three ways for purposes of an A and R endorsement.
Massachusetts law is amazing how some people think it can be tough to develop things. And yet here we are with a decision made in 1960 that would nowhere be acceptable today. Adam, do you have a problem providing the subdivision decision? I don't.
No, no, it's, it's a recorded plan. We provided the plan book and page reference. And so it's a matter of public record. We're happy to. And just to be clear, we're not proposing any development. We're just dividing a lot.
Adam, for the sake of expediency, could you or Jason pull that up and share screen?
Jason, do you have that handy?
Yep.
I'm not logged into my VPN.
That's it, though.
This, this is Wakeman's property, correct? The current owner?
No, I think it's further closer to the beach, Tom.
Yeah, this is owned by the 257 Atlantic Avenue Realty Trust. I don't know what the Wakeman property is. And so it's the division of lot C. Again, having frontage on that right of way approved under this subdivision plan by the planning board in 1960.
Is this a an A and R from 1960 or a subdivision plan?
A subdivision plan with waivers.
Are those, are those what's written down at the bottom there?
Yes. So those are waivers from the subdivision control law, which was adopted by the town in 1955.
Yeah. Actually. 54, I think. But anyway, that's, so let me just.
And again.
So wait a minute, requirements for a 40 foot way over lot B are waived, provided no forced subdivisions of lots A, B, and C shall be made without further approval of the planning board.
Correct.
Go, go back up to the plan for a minute. Where is B?
B is the front lot. So this concerns.
So you're proposing to subdivide C, which that note seems to say cannot happen without a further approval. You know, they were grant, they were granting the okay of a right of way, which I have to believe in 1960 was still the wrong thing to do, but be that as it may, they at least conditioned it, it appears by just reading that quickly, that is no further division of A, B, or C. Absent further approval. So here we are.
Yes. So that, that is what we're presenting to you is the, we're dividing that by.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know that that, that, that means we have to adopt that the right of way was an acceptable way. At 1960, they obviously put that condition in for a reason.
Sheriff Callahan, again, I'll, I'll defer to town council on this. We're simply dividing this lot under the subdivision control law under section 81P. It meets all of the requirements. We're not proposing any development. It's simply a division of this lot to put the house on one side, the cottage and the tennis court on the other side for purposes of estate planning.
I understand that. And it's probably going to be a buildable lot, correct? I mean, it's the intent that in the future it could be buildable.
Well, again, I, I, you're not to determine zoning compliance. These lots happen to meet the minimum lot and frontage requirements, but you're not determining whether these lots are buildable. All you're doing is again endorsing a plan because it doesn't show a subdivision under 81P. Whether or not they can redevelop these lots, whether they could get permits to that is an entirely different question. Again, there's no intention of doing that. This is just being done for family purposes.
I hear you loud and clear on that. All right. Anybody else from the board have any comments? I'll start with Mr. Brewer.
Well, the standard is, does it have the 50 feet of frontage and is there legitimate access? And then there appears to be legitimate access through the right of way, whether, whether the driveway itself is inadequate. I don't think is a matter. Since council indicates that they have frontage on this right of way. So I don't have any other.
And then I'll ask Carolyn, does that note give you any pause? The note that's on the 1960 plan?
Can I ask that we scroll down so we can see it again? So provided that there's no further subdivision of lots A, B, or C without further approval of the planning board. Mr. Chair, quite frankly, I think this is, the A and R plan before you is exactly that. It is a request for further approval of a subdivision.
On today's standards or 1960's standards?
Well, again, it's an A and R plan. So you're not looking at today's subdivision standards. You're looking at whether or not it has frontage on one of the variety of ways. And whether you
That is adequate.
agree with this 1960 endorsement or not. It is a legitimate subdivision plan. And these lots appear to have frontage on that previously approved subdivision plan.
And, and the adequacy of that access is not in play at all, you tell me.
Well, you can certainly look at the adequacy of it. But we also have to then bear in mind these other waivers that seem to have been granted. That, you know, at least satisfied the planning board in 1960. I don't know anything about the, the condition of what you're referring to is or where the, like the stub, the initial driveway past lot B. You know, if, if we've got some information that somehow or other I'm sorry, can we scroll back up now so we can actually see the lots? I mean, whatever that access, the condition of that access is along lot B. It appears it's been sufficient. Do we still have houses, Adam, on, on what's shown as lots A and C? That, does that still exist today?
So there's, there are structures on, on lot C. I believe there's the main house and then there's that second smaller cottage. And that was moved further to the west.
We haven't actually seen your, seen your plan.
Yeah.
What's, okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
Feel pretty small. There we go.
Correct. It's a small cottage that was moved there. There's a tennis court. The existing single family is going to be on lot C1. There are other. Uh, there are other uh houses on other properties, but to to Town Council's point, there's no change. Uh, we're not building anything, the, you know, the, the access to the property has been sufficient over this way, and we're not proposing any change of use which would intensify that use, and it's been like that for decades.
So you this, you could actually eighty-one L this, right? With two.
That that is, that is, that is correct, Mr. Brewer. We we wanted to avoid an argument with the planning board regarding eighty-one L.
Sorry.
Just made met all the requirements of eighty-one P, we made a tactical decision.
That makes sense. No more, nothing left to say.
Can you explain why that is for those of us that don't know the inside baseball on this one?
Would you like me to jump in on that one?
Yeah.
You had two of these previously, not too long ago. So it might be helpful, sorry, to to bother uh, the applicant's team. It might be helpful if we go back to the nineteen sixty plan for a moment. So you see how Lot C has two structures on it?
Mm-hmm.
Section eighty-one L of the subdivision control law contains an exemption from the A and R provision. It's called the existing structures exemption. And it allows that when you have more than one structure on a single lot, you can divide those lot, you can divide it into, you know, two lots, three lots, however many structures you have, such that you would have one building per lot. And it would be entitled to A and R endorsement. If you remember, I can't quite remember the address, but I know we had, one at Black Horse Lane and another one that I thought was on Atlantic Ave, that, you know, had a similar situation. And in both circumstances, uh, this board was pretty adamant against recognizing the types of structures as being eligible for that kind of of subdivision.
I remember them very well now. Thank you.
Those were, yeah, and the other structures were garages and barns.
In this case, they're two dwelling units.
Yeah.
But that's not what we're here to talk about. We're not talking about eighty-one eighty-one L.
No.
Nope. We're just asking for clarification, edification.
Still a giant loophole that the state law has created, but anyway. So anybody else that and on the board have any other questions, Mr. Hine, yourself?
I do not. I just, I just, is is that right of way as it's shown in the nineteen sixty's still a functional right of way now presently? I mean, there hasn't been a building or an accessory structure put on it that makes it no longer function as a right of way because it's blocked?
If you go back to the.
Here it is. Now it's.
You can see there's a driveway through it, but the right of way, the lines of the right of way still exist pretty much as shown in the sixty plan.
The endless quirks of Massachusetts owning one. All right, well, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R as shown.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on it? If not, take a roll call vote, alphabetical, please.
Bart Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Wesner, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
Your job, so nay.
And and where do we go to endorse this, um, to actual sign this now, Cassandra?
Uh, so you can endorse it at the building department. I will drop off the Mylar tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, not tomorrow morning, Friday morning.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, um, next, I know we have a citizen that wants to come in and speak to us about one forty-seven South Main Street. I believe that's the site where there was the fire and there was a mixed-use building that's replaced it. Um, do we have that individual Cassandra with us?
Yes, she is here. I'm promoting her now.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
My name is Michelle Goodson. I reside at one forty-three South Main Street in Cohasset. Um, just a little bit of history. I don't know how long you all have been on the boards and what your um familiarity is with this situation, but I can tell you that I've been living next door to this abomination for three years. Um, the current owner who inherited inherited it from his father, um, is the one that's sort of calling all the shots. I I'm just going to say this at for for brevity reasons. None of you live next door to this, so you can't even imagine the horror that I've been dealing with for the past three years. So you have the fire. Um, God bless Bob Egan because it took ten months and me, um, talking with Bob on a monthly basis to try to even get the structure taken down. That's how long I had to live next door to a smelly burning building. It was ten months. Um, not to mention the fact that my newly renovated um, property, um, almost caught on fire because of the negligence of the the tenant that had originally started the fire. So there's that, and then there's the fact that he somehow got a permit to put this building way farther back than the original structure. And also the fact that it it it's got mixed use to it. When I purchased this house, there was a little fix-it shop that was only open from eight to three, Monday through Friday. Um, it was a very quiet business. There were two single, um, little studio units above which two single gentlemen lived in. It literally was a large room split in half, and with all the research we did, there was no formal permit um, as those being legal apartments. So that's the beginning of this horror. Then, so then he got permission to put, I don't know, two or three bedrooms on the top floor and three commercial units on the bottom floor. And then the building is pushed way far back. So, all kinds of issues. I've been at the town hall probably, um, John and Chris can vouch, maybe on a monthly or every other monthly basis. Um, talking with John and Chris about how he is constantly doing the wrong thing with this property. Um, there are many other issues which I'm not going to discuss because they don't have to do with the real reason I'm calling um, your attention to this. So my real reason for for trying to get everybody on board is the lighting that is on this building is not appropriate. It, during COVID, we had many Zoom meetings about this. We talked about the type of lighting that was going to be put on the building. It was always understood that the lighting was going to be downspouted with no spillage onto my property or in my home. Okay, the fixtures that you guys approved, I apparently you weren't given an official electrical plan. You were given some sort of photogenic plan, which you all signed off on. Um, the fixtures are not appropriate. They're front-facing. They're not downspouting. And further to the nightmare is he's got four light poles in this very small space. Two are at fifteen feet tall and the other two are at ten feet tall. Also, not having downspouted lighting on it. So all I really need now is a set of stripers to be in my backyard for the perfect ballast show. Because it's a nightmare. It's going to look like a hockey rink when he puts those poles and that lighting up. So, I never understood nor did any of the abutters that this was going to happen. All of these discussions regarding the lighting, the poles were never called out. We were to understand that they were four foot, almost like, you know, four foot stone like pillars which which had small canopy lights on those. That's what we all thought was going in there. So that's why the process of appealing all of this thirty days afterwards never came to fruition because that was not my understanding of the lighting plan, nor was it the abutters' understanding. And here we are. So he's got the wrong fixtures on the building. He has put in the cement cylinders for the poles, but he hasn't, you know, attached them. He actually tried to get away with a fifth pole. But if it wasn't for me going down and speaking to both Chris and John, was he approached by John and told him, you have to remove that extra pole. It was never approved. And I don't know why you did it, so you got to get rid of it. So he did get rid of it. But here we are. I'm living next door. He's got floodlights on the right side of the building which shine in all of my bedroom windows and nobody can sleep. It's an S show. And I don't understand why he was allowed with a mixed-use building. I checked every other town around Cohasset and they all require a formal electrical lighting plan before things are approved. This was not done in his case.
Tom, this would be a site plan review uh by the planning board, and I believe it was a special permit by the zoning board of appeals.
I think it was.
Whatever whatever's on file for that um site plan review, if the if the builder owner has strayed from what was approved by us or the zoning board of appeals, then you have to look at the plan, look at what he has, and then uh, they should be the same, and if they're not the same, then uh he's in violation of conforming to his either site plan review by the planning board or his special permit by the zoning board of appeals.
We were told that you were the people that approved it. Nobody.
But there there were two approvals.
There were two, there were two.
Plan review by the planning board.
Okay, well, all I'm telling you is.
Board of Appeals.
Let me, Ms. Ms. Goodson, have you asked the building inspector to do any kind of enforcement activity? Which is your right.
Response was, he didn't approve this, you approved it, the planning board.
Plan, you'd have to pull the plan out and see if what he's doing is conforms to the plan or not.
Well, the lighting on the building doesn't conform to the plan. There was no mention, it was, excuse me, there was no mention of floodlights.
But you have to actually look at the plan and understand.
I looked at the plan. It's a photogenic plan and the fixtures were supposed to be downspouted on the building. They are not, and there is no mention.
Okay, well, then it sounds like he's not conforming to what was approved, so um, that that they would have to conform to what was approved.
Well, who does that?
Stop, stop, stop. All of you, all of you stop. All of you stop, okay? Carolyn, if you don't mind, for Ms. Goodson's benefit and for the benefit of the board, explain the enforcement process. Enforcement is done by building inspectors, not by boards. Please, just explain what has to be done here.
Correct. So so Ms. Goodson, I'm Carolyn Murray. I'm I'm the Town Council for the town of Cohasset. Uh, so the process here is, you are right to go to the building commissioner. Um, I don't know if you have ever put anything in writing or not, or whether it has just been verbal discussions, but I would recommend that you put a written complaint and request for zoning enforcement in writing to John Hallen. And document all of the things that you have just, you know, include lighting and any other issues where you think that somehow or other there is a zoning violation. Because as Mr. Brewer was explaining, everyone has to comply with either the zoning bylaws or they have to comply with the permits that they that have been issued by the various boards in this town. If you are not satisfied with the building inspector's response, you have a right to appeal to the zoning board of appeals from that determination from the building inspector. And if you're not satisfied with the response from the zoning board of appeals, you can then take it to Superior Court if you think that is necessary.
Okay, so Carolyn, maybe you need to have a discussion with John Hanlon because John told me and Chris told me they're under no jurisdiction to have to to deal with this matter at all. I was told to go directly to the planning board, and quite frankly, I have been in and out of the town hall on a monthly basis trying to make sure that this person next door is doing what he's supposed to be doing according to what, you know, he he's doing. Why should it be my responsibility as an abutter to govern the fact that he's not doing, I mean, to even get him to get, that John to get him to get rid of that extra pole, was me going in there on a monthly basis and having meetings with Chris and John. I mean, quite frankly, I'm just trying to tell you that I'm getting really tired of people pointing fingers in the other direction. Maybe you need to have a conversation with John Hanlon and explain to John what the process is because he told me he has no jurisdiction on the lighting plan because you all approved it. So.
Let me, let me just say this, I, you know, we we're not going to get into position of throwing John under the bus. I am surprised by that answer. I will admit to that. I am surprised by that answer. The zoning act of Massachusetts, and this is a pet peeve of mine, does not give the planning board enforcement authority. We can do certain things. We can maybe revoke a permit. I'm not even sure we can do that without a proper process begun. But the enforcement, he is called the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer. That's his official title. So I I don't have a problem with us speaking to him about it. But the process under the State Zoning Act and the town bylaw is that there has to be a request from a citizen and a butter for formal action by the building inspector. He has fourteen days to respond. You're unhappy with his decision or you get a non-decision, you go to the zoning board of appeals, you're unhappy there, you go to Superior Court. That's the process we have to work with. We can't instigate that process. You have to. I I appreciate your frustration with it. Um, but that is the process that we have to follow. I don't mind speaking to him, but I I can't instigate a formal enforcement process. Only citizen slash a butter can do that.
Okay, so.
Am I correcting that, Carolyn? Am I correcting that, Carolyn?
Or the building inspector can take.
Yeah, he can do it on his own initiative. Yes.
So then, maybe you need to have a discussion with John because this is even more upsetting that you're now telling me that he has the authority and yet he's been telling me and Chris has been telling me, they're very well, let me tell you, meetings have been taken place almost on a monthly basis about about many of the things that he's not doing that he's supposed to be doing. It shouldn't be my job as a resident of. It shouldn't be, and your building inspector should know the parameters of all the processes that you have outlined to me in the past ten minutes. He just keeps telling me, no, 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 you have to go before the planning board. They proved this. He never mentioned anything about a zoning board. He never mentioned anything about putting anything in writing. He simply continues to tell me I'm not under any authority or jurisdiction to change anything that the planning board has signed off on.
Let let me ask you this. Has he given you an opinion that there is a a something outside the permit? Again, he can only enforce two things. By law itself and the terms of the permits that were issued. And there were, in fact, two permits issued here.
By you and by the zoning board. Me, he has no, he can't do anything. I mean, I'm not, I I, listen. I have an architectural and design background that dates back twenty-five years. I've been a Cohasset resident for thirty-four years. What is going on next door is sad. And I'm the one that has to suffer for it because I live. And I'm the one that has to suffer for it because I live right next door to that property. And the lighting is wrong. I don't think anybody ever even looked at what these fixtures were because I don't think they would have signed off of them if they knew the spillage. The spillage is at like ninety percent. He's got all the wrong lumens. It's just a nightmare. When those poles go up, forget about it. It's going to look like a hockey rink. I'm going to be living next door to a hockey rink. So I'm just doing what I was told to do and that was.
I I appreciate that. That's what you were told to do. And I'm going to, we're going to try to make it right for you, but it again, we cannot on our own initiative instigate enforcement. We can cajole the building inspector to do to to do enforcement if it's called for. Again, it has to be something that was a condition of a permit that has been violated here. Or or it's a violation of the bylaw in some respect. So there has to be something to enforce. That's that's the threshold question. But I I'm I'm saying to you as the chair of this board that I, you know, be glad to try to help you get through that, but I, you know, my my authority, my legal authority as chair of the planning board, the board as a whole is limited by state law in the way it has set up the enforcement mechanism.
Okay, well, I'm just doing what he told me to do.
I get it. I I get it.
And Chris also, Chris is very well aware of the shenanigans going on across the street, but Chris's hands are tied. And he can't do anything because he doesn't have any government over the boards. I've listened to this on and on and on.
And that is true. And neither does I, to my knowledge, does he have particular expertise in zoning. But that
Okay, well.
Great town. He's a great town manager, but you know, again, we all have our little niches and that's.
Of course you do. But none of you are living next door to this. And there ought to be an understanding of what you people are signing off on. And I mean.
Well, I would all due respect, if we were presented A in a plan and we signed off on A and it was appropriate for us to sign off on A, that's what we did. If he hasn't executed A, then that is a matter of enforcement and we need to take care of that. And we and I'm again, I'll repeat myself to a little blue in the face, but we will try to help you here as best we can. And if the answer is we've spoken to him, go ahead and initiate the enforcement proceeding. That's what we'll do. But I we we, you know, we got to get to the facts. We're not sitting here tonight with our permit in front of us or with the zoning board's permit. And the zoning board's permit was a little more substantial than ours. We we did what's called site plan review. We had to make sure the traffic flowed and landscaping was done. And yes, the lighting was adequate. They had to give a special permit that had a a more significant standard to meet in order for that building to be permitted. So there's two permits we have to look at and see whether there has been a violation of those permits. Uh, we we, you know, we issue permits all the time. To be very honest with you, we don't all go around driving around town looking to see if all the permits we've issued in the last three, four, five years have been enforced. That's why we have a zoning enforcement officer.
But excuse me, Tom, just something that's related is we do have the dark sky um, requirement that's a part of our bylaws now that got passed last uh, last year.
And. I don't remember if he was complying, if he had to comply with. I don't know if this, I think this permit may have come before.
Well, yes, the special permit may have been um, provided ahead of time, but the the requirement would still be in place. Um, um, as a part of uh, that that's a part of uh, our, yeah, you're actually right. Actually, the the special permit would would have locked in place what the dark sky or light trespass changes were, but there were some dark sky or and light trespass requirements that were in place as a part of when when this was approved. So it it's gonna, it's gonna take a little a bit of review of what was approved, the actual plans, whatever fixtures were submitted uh, to find out and then taking a look at what's there just to find out what's going on.
Okay, so let me just reiterate. This is a residential area. This is not three A. And it's a residential area and there ought to be some resistance to hockey rink lighting when you're next to all these residences where these lights are shining into people's living spaces.
I don't disagree with you, but this was, if I recall correctly, this was a unique property that had pre-existing non-conforming rights. We can't use the term grandfathered anymore, but it it pre-existed zoning in a mixed-use capacity. And it got a quirk of the law that allowed that use to continue. Um, even though today it is an all-residential district. So it it was the particular quirk, particular to that property and particular to the old gas station property next to it, by the way. So um, the the two properties just are quirky. That's all I can say about that, but um, certainly they have to be respectful of the fact that they are in in a residential area. But so again, we will look into it and see what we can do about it as much as possible.
I would greatly appreciate it and I would greatly appreciate if on both of these boards, whether it be your board or the zoning board. I mean, in my mind, when I did my research in the uh, surrounding towns, people don't get just to sign off on plans photogenically in a residential area where, you know.
What do you mean by photogenically with all due respect? I'm sorry.
Uh, the plan that I was given was a photogenic. Is that not the correct term, Cassandra? What what is the correct term for the plan that was submitted?
It's it's not photogenic. Um, you're close. It's uh, very similar to the plan that they were just showing for the site plan review that you just saw the.
Oh, photometrics.
It's just like, yeah, photometric renderings.
How much lighting.
Photometric. That was so the photometric plan was the plan that was submitted for the lighting. That is the only lighting plan that we have on file for this particular project.
Okay, and I can tell you from my background, dealing with commercial and residential design, that should have never been allowed in this in this district. They should have. You guys should have asked for an actual electrical plan that showed the lumens and the light spillage into the adjacent properties. I mean, the fact that that was never given to you is mind-boggling. And the fact that you never asked for it is even more mind-boggling. I I just can't wrap my head around it. And you seem to be unique in in reference to other towns' expectancy of what's being submitted in order to get these permits.
Can we wrap this up, Tom?
What's that?
Can we wrap this up?
Oh, I I I we're in the middle of rewriting the zoning bylaw and there are a lot of things we don't have that we should have. And maybe excruciatingly detail on lighting is something we need. This board, I will tell you, we have been doing, I think, a fairly good job to enforce standards on projects residential and commercial. We just talked about this with the storage facility earlier tonight about the type of lighting. Um, Mr. Hein went into a number of questions and and comments about this very subject two permits ago uh, tonight. And and it's something we take seriously, but yes, does our bylaw need to be patched up in places? Of course it does. It's not perfect. And we are working on doing that. And we we are aware of what shortcomings it has and it doesn't have. But I, you know.
Okay, well, Mr. Callahan, I would appreciate it if you would assist me and the board assists me in making sure that I don't abide by a hockey rink next door to my small little house that I have worked for seven years to rebuild. It's so upsetting, Tom. If you lived here and you had to deal with that for three years in July, it will be. You would understand my frustrations. If somebody just did their job and the right thing at the right, at the beginning of all of this, I wouldn't have to be through this. So at at this uh, this is what I'm asking you of the board. Please help in making sure that this person does what they're supposed to be doing. Now, if you all signed off on that, he's going to be able to do whatever he 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 wants to do without any repercussions. And then I'm going to have an extra state, an extra space storage unit lighting next to my house. Which is not what I purchased when I bought this property. It it's just an abomination. So whatever you can do to help me in making the right, you know, the situation, I just wish Tom had told me all about this in the beginning. Then I wouldn't have to waste, you know, my time, your time. I was told to deal with you first. I never was told about the zoning board. So I'll leave all of that up to you to address to Tom so that, I mean, sorry, address to John what we can do going forward.
I I, as I said, I will, we will pledge our assistance and I will speak to the chair of the zoning board about it as well. But I don't want you to get into the understanding that we are some kind of advocates for you or representing you in some way. My lawyer hat tells me to just be cautious about your expectations. Again, the law requires in the end of the day, if there's been a violation of a permit, the law requires a citizen or John Howland on his own initiative to start the enforcement process, not us. And I just want you to be very, very clear about that.
And Tom, I think you were very clear, as was Carolyn, with the specific steps that need to be taken to document the formal issue at play here. And I would request that Ms. Goodson take what was said and act on that so that it can go to the next step in the proper review process and start according to how Ms. Murphy, Ms. Murray explained.
Again, if I was told in the beginning that a formal letter was needed, I would have submitted that. So.
I apologize that you, I apologize that you weren't told that, but under the state statute and the town bylaw, if you initiate a complaint letter seeking enforcement to the building inspector, he has to act within fourteen days. So he can't ignore it. If he chooses to ignore it and not act, then there's, then you take the next step in the enforcement process. But that it it has to begin with a certain level of formality. I appreciate that everybody wants to just be able to come on and speak to their town officials and hopefully get redressed, but sometimes you're not going to get that all the time. So I will, again, I'm going to reach out to the zoning board chair. I will reach out to Mr. Hallen. And then we'll we'll go from there. But I don't know what was in the two permits sitting here tonight. And those would have to be reviewed first to see if an actual violation is happening.
Okay, and in the interim, I will write a formal letter of complaint and give it to John Hallen.
Why don't you, why don't you hold off until we determine that there is a violation at issue to to seek enforcement of? Because if there's no violation of either the bylaw or a permit, then there's nothing to enforce. Okay, so let's first determine that.
And who will be giving me that information?
I I I, you know, again, I don't want to get into the position, I can't get into the position that I'm some kind of advocate for you or or the or this board is a whole.
In you to be an advocate, I'm just expecting people to do their job. I've got lights on a building that weren't approved. These are front-facing listings billing into my property. That's number one violation. So I hear what you're saying. I will have a letter drafted by my attorney if it's necessary. I'll call whoever you want me to call from the state, whatever you want me to do. I just want people to do their job.
All right, understood.
That's it.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have any minutes to approve?
You do not. Uh, they're a bit behind.
All right. Um, next week, please try to have a quorum. I won't be here next week. You just have the one matter on for the moment, but.
Yes, so you'll just have the seventy Black Horse Lane. I'll try to also have some minutes for you to approve. Um, Clark, if you would like to vote on the large home review and you would like to fill out the Mullen form prior to next week's meeting, I can have that ready for you if you want to review the meeting that you missed.
Yeah, I don't think you need me. It doesn't have to be a super majority or anything.
Up to you.
All right. All right, so there was a motion made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Right. Favor. Alphabetical.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, and I.
Wes Mar, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
Andrew Hobbs, and I.
Okay, thank you all.
Good night.
All right.
Good night, all. Good night, everyone.
Thanks. Good night.